It's not a problem. I, I have great way.
I think of all the country is.
You know, leftover time.
But it's more.
Okay.
Call of February nineteenth, Polk City Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. Roll call.
Hinkins.
Here.
Power socks?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Triplet?
Here.
Olfest?
Here.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
There. Item three, approval of the agenda.
I make, I make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four, approval of P and Z Commission meeting minutes for January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five, Parker Town Homes, two plat of survey and record of lot tie agreements. Is there a developer that would like to speak on the item?
Fair, just standing here.
Yeah, go up here and state your address, please.
My name is Daniel Wilrick. I am here with Polk Design Services. We're located twenty-three, three Dixon Street, Des Moines. Our client, Bruce Lefkow, owns the, uh, the Parker Town Homes two site. There's a small piece kind of at the northwest corner of that site. He wants to carve off and create a separate part. So that's what we're looking at. Approval of that plat of survey and then I think they've got a lot tie agreements. He's gonna tie it to that lot thirty-five right next door. So, pretty straightforward.
Stephanie.
Yep, so to kind of expand on that, um, so the, the parcel that's being split off is originally part of the Parker Town Homes plat two, uh, PUD master plan and is shown as an unbuildable, untouched parcel. Um, splitting of this parcel will not create a buildable parcel. It does not meet the minimum requirements for width, as well as there's an existing PUE along the west side of lot thirty-five. It essentially splits the two parcels, so there'd be a lot of cost associated with, um, expanding the home or doing anything like that that would approach on this lot. Um, so it's not, an unbuildable lot, it'll be tied. Um, it does not require any sort of rezoning. It has an unbuildable lot, because it'll still meet the, the intent, the, the prescription of the PUD master plan. Um, one thing worth noting is in our review comments, we had noted that a recorded version of the Davis Street vacation documents needed to be provided to the city. We were able to find that in our records. Um, so item number two on the comments have been addressed. We just need to work on the county to get their mapping updated. Um, the other two items will need to be provided, uh, prior to this item advancing council. Those are items that were in association with the Parker Town Homes plat two site plan. It would be reported by the developer. The city never got recorded copies of those items. Um, so we'll, we'll get that cleaned up at the same time. Um, and the record of lot tie agreement is under review by the city attorney. We have provided to the developer.
Anyone in the audience, any comments on this item? Commission?
Uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we recommend the council, uh, approval of the Parker Town Homes two plat of survey and, uh, record of a lot tie agreement. Subject to, uh, city staff's, uh, recommendations and comments stated for it.
Roll call?
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes.
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet? Olfest?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, On With Life Site amended site plan and plat of survey. Anyone representing the owner?
Hi, we're Neil with Double Advantage, four one twenty-one Northwest Earth Drive. Um, so we are here presenting I know you've seen this project multiple times before, but it is located at one zero zero two West Washington Street. So, what On With Life is obviously currently under construction, but they have purchased an additional piece of land, kind of which is taking their lot size from that three point four acres now out to five acres. So there was kind of a flat lot, if you imagine, that surrounded them on their west and their north, and they have purchased that property. So I'm bringing through is a plat of survey that is creating that parcel, and then also the site plan amendment, kind of showing those updates with now that larger lot. So really, I would say, the main piece that, um, is handled in that site plan amendment is that buffer that is pushed farther out to the edges of a lot of those residential homes. So, um, I believe we also have a buffer deferral request that is happening from, I want to say it's four ten Tyler Street. Um, if the property owner has requested us to not place, I believe there's about three trees that we are proposing to be placed for that, that buffer, and they would like to defer that at a later date, and they want to keep their view open at this time. You gonna answer any questions? Do you have any?
So there won't be a buffer, why four ten is where you're saying?
Correct.
At, at the request of the property owner and the way that we're going to handle that after coordination with the city attorney, is it will not be a separate deferral agreement. It will actually be within the easement document. And so, should a, a future property owner wish to have that buffer installed, it would be governed, dictated, and enforced the same way as the rest of the block would be.
Okay. Any other engineering comments?
Not at this time.
Any members of the audience like to address this topic? Commission, any comments, questions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, to recommend council approval of the On With Life amended site plan plat of survey. Uh, subject to staff's, uh, comments and review comments and recommendation dated on February fourteen, two thousand.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes.
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Any passes? Item seven, cleanup rezoning petitions. Can you report?
So, question before I start, would you want to go through these one at a time? Or do you want me to present them all at once? And we discuss them all at once. It's up to you guys. When we initiated rezonings last week at council, I didn't.
Oh, I think we might have some folks here who want to make comments on specific items. If we could maybe have a fill of hands as far as what you'd like to talk about. Maybe handle the ones that no one wants to talk about as a group. But if we have citizens that want to talk about an item, maybe we'd want to do those separately. That's just a, a thought.
I just have a question about five sixteen North Third Street one. For me, it'd be easier to do separately or together.
Let's just do them separately.
Okay.
So we'll start with, uh, five sixteen North Third Street. Um, so this is an existing single-family residential home that's currently being rented out by the current property owner. Um, it is zone GF one, and we have, we don't have a lot of background information. I guess I should preface this, but these are all of the rezonings that back in November, you guys recommended the council initiate. Um, and the council initiated it last week, and so now we're bringing it back for your formal review and recognition. Um, so five sixteen North Third Street, um, it's an existing resident, single-family residential home. It's being rented out by the, the current property owner. It's zone GF one, and we don't really have a lot of information as to why it's GF one. It could be buffering, it could be some sort of, the city owned it at one point and sold it. Uh, we, we don't have the records understanding why it's zone GF one. Um, rezoning this property to R one would help bring this home into compliance, and then should anything happen to the home, uh, there be an accident, it takes damage more than fifty percent. The property owner wants to add on to the home or add an outbuilding, uh, they would be allowed to do that under the current use, uh, versus right now, if that house were to burn down or take more than fifty percent damage, the property could not rebuild as a single-family home.
If anybody would like.
You've answered it.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the commission on this item? All right. Area two.
You want to take the recommendation independently on it, too?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation, uh, or a motion that we recommend to council approval of the rezoning petition, five sixteen North Third Street from GF one to R one.
Second. Roll call?
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes.
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
All right, area two.
Area two is portions of six lots along, uh, Hillcrest Drive, and then one that's tied to a lot that has a Washington, a West Washington Avenue, uh, address. Um, so this is a pocket of GF one surrounded by R one directly. And some R three, this is actually an old clip of the zoning map. But directly west of the On With Life site plan that you guys just reviewed. Again, this is a GF one district that we're not really sure what the history behind it is. Ron Anderson has indicated to staff that there was at one point, a peanut gallery park is what they called it, um, that was in the flag lot that On With Life purchased, and this may have been some sort of buffering, uh, some sort of access, something like that, um, associated with that, and that may be why it was a GF one district. Uh, but as of right now, we're recommending, uh, rezoning from GF one to R one for the purposes of allowing the, the property owners who own the homes to be able to use that portion of the lot in a residential. So with a GF one district, they technically are not allowed to have outbuildings or accessory uses or structures associated with the residential use, because a residential use is a non-conforming use in a GF one district. Um, so because those, that those portions of those parcels are zone GF one, they're technically not allowed to use that in the accessory manners of a normal residential parcel. Um, so rezoning from GF one to R one would clean those. So.
What is a GF one?
It is a municipal zoning district, so it's meant for government facilities. So like City Hall is in a GF one zoning district. The new City Hall is, the maintenance building out on North Side Drive is in GF one. It's essentially what the city's, uh, facilities are located in. So it's a governmental, it's meant for government and civic use.
How come on the, uh, Polk County Assessor's, the G one?
They haven't updated it.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's been thirty years.
Now.
The park was actually, the park was actually the lots that you're talking about.
Okay.
It wasn't the place.
Okay.
So, the park was actually the ones you're talking about.
Okay.
But on the, uh, Polk County Assessor's page, it's, uh, U one.
So Polk City towards the tail end of last year revised their zoning districts, because we used to have a DF district and a U district. The U was for city facilities, and the DF was brought in. At the, or was created at the same time the Backwaters and Bear Dam were brought in, because the Corps didn't want their land in any other zoning district that could potentially be governed, even though cities don't have the authority to do that. Um, so we, towards the tail end of last year, we cleared it up, too. The GF one has the same regulations that the U district did. We just cleaned up that, the nomenclature there to make sure that it was clear what, that, the GF district was completely unused, and we were using U one for what the GF one now is.
I thought the city was going to update that stuff when, when that property was split off. And I'm kind of confused why I pulled this up here, because I thought that was part of our purchase agreement.
See, the, the city is handling that. So that, that's what this proceeding is. So council, at last Monday's council meeting initiated the rezoning. And then it goes to P and Z, and then next week, the city will, or the city council will hold their public hearing as well as the first reading of that rezoning. Once the rezoning goes through the first, second, and third reading, um, council will have the option to waive that, uh, so should they so choose, at the next council meeting. But once it goes through all those readings, that cleans up the zoning and it'll be taken.
And we can't answer the why it wasn't done that way originally, but we're fixing it now.
Because, because that was part of our purchase agreement. Law, if the city takes that.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
No.
Okay, commission members? Oh, yes.
Does it change the taxes on those lots?
No.
No.
Cool, that's all that matters.
Unless, unless you add a building.
Yes.
I, I'm not gonna tell you what the county will do after that.
Questions from the commission or? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to, uh, council approval of the zoning petition for portions of five lots along Hillcrest Drive, uh, located at numbers five, four, nine, quarter, four, seven, and four twenty-one, and a portion of one lot at twelve oh one West Washington, all from GF one to R one.
Second.
Roll call?
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet? Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes. Can I clarify just one thing? Still got a little bit, like. This young lady asked if that would change property taxes, I believe. And I heard you say no, and then say, but I don't know what the county's gonna do. Is that?
If they add a building. If they add ta, a taxable structure to it, I can't tell you what the Polk, what Polk County.
But the fact that they're adding land to their property, is that?
So they currently own it.
They currently own it.
They currently own it. The ownership's not changing. The city's not selling it. It's, it's, it's purely changing the zoning so they can use it like any other residential lot.
I'm good then.
Yep.
Area three, engineering report?
Yep, so one oh six South Third Street, the Masonic Lodge right here next door. Um, this was actually a product of our conversation, uh, as we were discussing these preliminarily. Um, this commission identified Masonic Lodge as having a remnant C one zoning district, um, and recommended council initiation of C one to CTS zoning district. Um, after reviewing, staff would concur with that recommendation as it is the last remnant piece of non-CTS that faces onto the square. It doesn't have a dedicated park facility, and should that building at any point be redeveloped or reconfigured to the point where it would have to comply with zoning districts, it doesn't have the space to provide a dedicated parking district, which would probably be the primary concern being the square. So, for those reasons, we recommend, uh, rezoning from C one to CTS for the Masonic Lodge lot next door.
Any comments or questions from the public? Commission members?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the rezoning petition for South Third Street from C one to C, uh, TS.
Roll call?
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes.
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet? Olfest?
Yes. All right. Area four.
So for your consideration tonight, City Hall parking lot located northwest of City Hall here. The adjacent alleyways as well are included in this. Um, essentially, so this, this parking lot lies in the C one zoning district, but is being, it's owned, maintained, and functions as a civic and municipal facility. Um, therefore, we believe it should be a GF one zoning district. It, I, I think it cleans up that all city-owned property would be in the GF one zoning district, and it's serving a civic function as a shared park facility just off the square. So for those reasons, we would recommend rezoning from C one to GF.
Any questions or comments from the public? Commission members?
Just a question, the flagpole section of it now is going to just be a narrow piece of zoning between two CTS portions. Is that a concern at all? I mean, is it kind of functional like an alley, pretty much?
The flagpole section will actually butt up against the zoning of this building. So it will, it will be GF one on the southwest side and CTS on the northeast.
Okay, I, I was looking at the math wrong. Yes, thank you. Uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend the council, uh, approval of the rezoning petition for the city parking lot, uh, located adjacent to, uh, City Hall. I have a community, former community center, uh, from C one to GF one.
Second.
Roll call?
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes.
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
All right, area five, engineering report?
So the final area tonight is fifteen hundred and sixteen hundred West Broadway Street. Uh, the, the lots that currently house the current, uh, Polk City Library, and then the lot that was just purchased by city council with intent of eventually being the expansion of the city. This rezoning would be from C two to GF one. The library is a currently, uh, compliant use of the C two district. That, uh, certain civic uses are allowed within the C two district. However, cleaning this up to be a GF one zoning as a municipal use would make the administration cleaner, as well as, um, in the interim between the purchase of the property and the expand, potential expansion of Polk, the Polk City Library. Council has discussed it may pursue temporarily using it as a park-type facility, ball field or something similar, and those uses actually are not allowed within the C two zoning district. Um, so, I know there was some discussion about concerns about losing commercial property in Polk City, particularly at this corner, based on the, the desired use, at least in the interim, this, for the city council. Uh, in order to put some sort of park facility on that extra lot, it would need to be a GF one zoning district. And so for those reasons, we recommend a rezoning from C two to GF one in this area.
Questions, comments from the public?
Yeah, concerns over that, because that butts up to the back of my house. And the house that's currently there, when they were moving the buildings, when they had their lights shining on, the house shines right into my bedroom. So I was up for two and a half hours while they were still there working until almost midnight.
Can we get your name and address, too?
Nancy Edler, two forty-five North Cherokee Drive. So I have a concern of light pollution, basically, is my biggest concern and noise levels. If you're putting a park over there, that's gonna elevate the noise. When I purchased my house, it was because that was a residential. The library was there, both quiet areas. I have dogs that when I run out, I, yeah, that's an issue for me to have that all changed to now become a noise and light issue party. That's my biggest concern.
I, I know you mentioned the use of a park. That's not actually been discussed with the full council, and I think the intent would be for it to be a temporary green space. I don't know that lights would go up at that facility.
You're saying temporary, I'm talking permanent. I mean, I bought it based on what the area was.
Yep.
What I expect it to be.
But it was C two, is what it's.
Correct.
So there would be lights and.
So although there was a house there, it was zoned as commercial, is what they're saying.
So when did it change from residential to commercial? Because it was living there. A year ago, there was people living in the house.
So that would be a, an existing non-conforming use. So if that house had become damaged, or if they wanted to do more than fifty percent of the value in a remodel, they wouldn't have been allowed to do it because it has been zoned C two. Yeah, for a long time. I know there are some remnant pieces throughout town that sometimes were zoned for their eventual use and not their actual use. But I would say that the permanent condition, the city fully intends to be an expansion of the Polk City public.
That, I suspect they have no issue.
Any questions, comments, or information?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we recommend to council the rezoning petition for, uh, fifteen hundred and sixteen hundred West Broadway from C two to GF one.
Second.
Roll call?
Power socks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet? Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes. All right, thank you. Item eight, discuss modifications of the R two A zoning district to ensure inclusion of.
So for this, kind of wanted to give you guys an update and, uh, let you know that's something that staff's working on. So the R two A zoning district, when it was originally added to the subdivision regulation, was intended to use in town. At the time that that ordinance was prepared, that zoning district was prepared, the most common form of townhomes were row homes. So three or more, three, the way the Polk City code is written is three to six homes, all connected in a row in a townhome machine. Staff has met several times with developers on various projects, as well as heard the, both the commissions and the councils' concerns about number of PUDs that we're seeing, um, here recently for townhome type projects. And so what we've currently undertaken, or starting to look at, is an update to the R two A zoning district to bring it up to what is currently, uh, more common than row homes, which is the patio garden-style homes, so the standalone, single-family homes of, of smaller varieties that are in a townhome type regime that may be on postage stamp lots with the shared townhome HOA lock around them, um, so that we don't have to continue to use the PUD master, or the PUD zoning district as the only thing that a townhome can fit into, because the R two A zoning district is written in a very specific manner to accommodate the row home construction. Uh, we wanted to put that out in front of you, get you guys thinking about that. Our intent is to bring a full-blown, um, set of recommended regulations for your review at the March P and Z, uh, but wanted to put that on your radar and get you thinking about it. In case you have thoughts, comments, concerns, or questions as we're preparing those recommendations, feel free to reach out to staff and let us know those, so we can incorporate those. We can make that March discussion as productive as possible.
Patio homes, do they have basements?
So some of them do, some of them don't, but typically, a, a patio garden-type home would not, would be slabbed, right? At least that's what some of the ones that we've met with developers have said, is that there's not that appetite for basements and that kind of thing, that it's folks that are trying to stay in town, but don't need all the space that they used to have in that situation.
We don't have any, like, six, right?
Wolf Creek.
Yep, Wolf Creek Town Homes would be one.
Crossroads, I think some of those are slabbed on, right?
Yep.
The newer homes.
The, the single, yes.
Yep.
And crossroads townhomes?
Yep.
Those are both in PUDs currently.
But so, so, some of the, uh, developments that we're looking at to try and understand, so like Ledge Stone Ridge up there, Ledge Stone Court by the hotel, um, it's in a PUD, but it was kind of the, in our minds, that would be the kind of development that the R two A zoning district should be written for. Portions of Wolf Creek Town Homes would be, um, the mixed nature of Wolf Creek Town Homes, where there's some six-plexes, there's some duplexes, there's some buy-attached townhomes, there's some standalone. That one probably still would be a PUD, but the, the smaller, single-family homes are kind of poor heat with the R two A zoning district. Because the PU, a PUD zoning should, in our minds, be something like Wolf Creek Town Homes, where there's a variety of. where there's a variety of homes that you can't just put one blanket zoning designation on. You would be looking at general densities over the whole area or shared parking amongst different uses of that stuff. That, in our mind, is what the PUD should be used for, and then the R two A should be more of this quote-unquote standard townhomes. Lakewood's Townhomes would be another example, one of the, one of the developments that we're looking at that would be, that would be what we're aiming for, the R two A zoning district.
Questions on that?
Yeah, I, that, it makes sense to me, just, and going back to the PUD, something that I think has been lost in the way we've been applying it is, as, at least as I look at it, is if you're doing a PUD residential community and you're wanting to put the residences into smaller lots, the trade-off of that is that there should then be some large green space that is shared by all of those residents. And that's the piece that I think that we have been missing in our residential PUDs. It's not just smaller lot size, it's trading that for a shared space.
And that is a lot of the, these developments that we've talked to developers about, a lot of them do have these shared spaces, whether it be a clubhouse, or shared grill space, or a portion of the detention base that'll be dry most of the time, it's just space, that kind of thing, where it's that shared space that not only provides that shared space, but also brings the density of neighborhood around, or down, to make it much less dense than it actually, or make it seem much less dense.
All right.
Good. Thank you.
Item nine, discussion of P and Z future meeting dates.
So I wanted to have a conversation with you all tonight about when your meetings are. Ran into an issue in January where we didn't have a forum at our meeting, and one of the members, Deanna Triplett, reached out to me a few weeks in advance and said, can we reschedule planning and zoning? That is a federal holiday, it's also caucus night. And that is a very tough thing for us to do. We try to be as accommodating as possible, but it's hard, it's a lot of work for us to move a meeting through, you know, one member. If you all can share with us when it's going to be a conflict, and if we can get ahead of it, you know, that makes it much easier for us. So I thought we could maybe just spend a little time talking this through tonight. Your meetings are the third Monday of every month. That is almost always going to conflict with MLK Day and Washington Presidents' Day, which is today. The city does not recognize those days as actual holidays where we're closed, we're open business on both of those holidays. I was looking at the calendar, Juneteenth now is a federal holiday that is also not a city-observed holiday. That could be one we run into in the future again. But I, I kind of want to start this discussion tonight, you all set your own rules and procedures within certain parameters. So if that's something that we need to talk about, reviewing a calendar each year to make sure it doesn't conflict with some of those big events that go on, you know, I think that's the best way to handle it.
Well, I think it's good the way it is unless, of course, you want to reschedule for Iowa State playing Houston right now at six o'clock. Yeah, my, my, it's funny, but my point is, we just can't start rescheduling for every event, and if we can't make it, we can't make it. I felt bad that I couldn't zoom in. In fact, I just didn't feel because I had just had surgery. If, actually, Jenny would have called, I could have zoomed in, at least turned the computer on, and maybe we could have had a forum, so I would never mind if you tried to apologize for Jenny.
Yeah, I understand it was, there was a lot going on that night, and this is not about, you know, shaming anyone or singling anyone out, but if we do have a conflict with the meeting, I do think the best way for us to handle it as a group is to have it on like, the agenda ahead of time so that we can actually move the meeting, because there's a lot of people that we have to notify when we move meetings. So that would be kind of what I'm asking for, but does anybody have anything they'd like to add other than Doug's comment? You want to keep it as is?
Yeah, I agree with Doug.
Okay.
I think it's worked other than that one time.
Yeah.
I think we've always been able to get a forum, and I've been on them, so I was.
I, I always try and tell Jenny whether I'm gonna be here or not. Yeah, did that not happen that night?
You did. Yeah, it was just a perfect storm, that you were one of many that had events happen.
And I admit, I would, I probably was like, I could have given it earlier.
Yeah, yeah. Most of the time, you, you all let me know actually the month before. Here, you let your fellow members know, and that's, that's fine.
Next month is spring break, if anybody's going.
It's the after.
You did.
So it sounds like you'll be.
We'll be back. Barring any of your problems.
No, this, this is good. I, you know, I recognize that, you know, that this time and this date has been set for planning and zoning to meet for a long time, so I think it's good for us to just have a conversation about when you're meeting. It sounds like the third Monday of the month does work for you all. We just had an issue last week. Okay.
I know.
I do have something, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but do we, and I'm just throwing this out here, do we actually need to have monthly meetings? I know sometimes there's event flows and, you know, whether or not we have things come in front of us, sometimes we meet and it's just an update. Is that something to be considered?
I, in the past, have canceled meetings if there has not been any business items. Obviously, I work with the chair and staff. That's how I've handled it. I think there's been a couple of years where we've canceled three meetings in that particular year because it's development-driven. So I don't know how everyone feels that that has worked in the past, but that is my intent not to, I mean, staff doesn't want to meet just to meet, no offense. So, I mean, if we have a, a month that we can go without meeting, I would certainly, I'm fine with continuing to cancel that that way.
Yeah.
Usually give us a good heads up too.
Yeah, because we have the deadline set from when the, it's really development-driven. I mean, the developers have a certain timeline that they have to get their stuff in, and if they meet that deadline, can't really say, no, we're not gonna meet for another month, because that puts a project behind.
Okay, but what if we did it as, okay, we'll meet monthly February through November, we're not meeting in December and January, you could request a special meeting, and if that, if there's something urgent that comes up, what about that?
I, I think that is, that's just challenging. You know, typically, we try not to meet in December, but we also recognize that we need to be here and possibly hold a meeting if it's development-driven.
Yeah, I think it'd be difficult to shut it down for.
Two months.
A couple of months.
And, and I will say, staff is mindful of that too, and that's part of like, the zoning petitions that were on your agenda tonight. We kind of delayed that, understanding the last month, there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of people, a lot of different places, that's probably not the best way to handle the rezoning piece. And then December, you know, we weren't gonna have that be the only thing on agenda. So we're mindful too of the city cleanup-type stuff, bringing that forward at meetings that have other things on them as well. So we, we are mindful of that, and we won't, you know, we won't have a meeting for something like, just something like this, unless it, there's some other driving force. Like, I think City Hall, we probably would have had that be the only thing on the meeting, just because of timing and everything, but at the same time, you know, if it's not urgent, we're, city-type stuff, by itself.
Yeah, I have a, a question. Normally Jenny gets stuff to us at least by Friday, so that's an, at least a reminder and appropriate time for all of us to at least, on that Friday, to respond back to Jenny, which is what I try to do. Now, since we had this refresher course on open meeting, when I get that email, I, it goes out to everybody, and I am reluctant to respond to that email specifically, even though it comes up and I can just click something and say I'm coming. I don't do it, I send you a separate email.
You're doing it correctly. I would not want you to send it to everyone.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, is that we just don't respond to that email because it goes out to everybody, which I understand might be a violation of the law.
And we, I mean, we track, we track that. If it, if it runs into an issue where we think we aren't gonna have forums, then we'll have future communications between that Friday and Monday.
And on Friday, we had a forum for that particular meeting. On Monday, we did not. So things had changed, and that's why I say there was multiple things. It was definitely not just you.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks. I can sleep, thanks. And the good news is the clones game is that a, so, anything else on that topic?
No.
Item ten, reports in particulars, council liaison.
One of the biggest things we're looking at right now probably is the, the brush pile, the city's brush pile, we had a work session to discuss that. It's something that I know some citizens really appreciate and value, the cost has escalated in recent years. So I think we're gonna have another work session this coming Monday, right? To discuss some options, but trying to figure out if there's a way that we can keep the cost down a little more for our residents, look at some alternative options, and we'll go from there. But, you know, that's been around for a while, that'll be a big change. Any, any change is gonna be a big thing for people, but, but, yeah, the cost has gone up significantly in recent years, so it's our responsibility to take a look and study the feasibility of it and alternative options if necessary.
Because the only way to get rid of it is to grind it up.
So you can help me with that.
Yes, yeah. We used to be able to burn, and there's, there's, burning's not allowed in Polk County. So that's something that has increased our costs throughout the years significantly. That equipment is very specialty equipment to, you know, chip up and, and produce mulch, and it's just, it's an expensive service.
Yeah, very, very nice to have.
Where would you go?
Oh, there is a curbside option that most folks probably don't know exists. Metro Waste Authority, you can buy a bin that's the same size as your garbage recycling bin, it's a hundred and five dollars for the whole year. They pick up every Friday from April to November, and then, you know, at, at Christmas time, for a dollar, you can get rid of your Christmas tree at the curb without a bin. You can also buy bags and stickers and all those other things, but kind of did the math, and if you use it every week, it's cheaper to do the bin for a hundred and five. But, yeah, it's, it, I mean, it's a pretty convenient way to get rid of your, your leaves and your tree clipping.
So they're working on some options, some different, you know, we, we threw out some ideas last time at our, our work session, but, and, you know, we may give something a try, see how it goes, and then reevaluate again down the road, but I have a feeling there will be a change in some way, shape, or form. We don't know yet what that will be, but I know, if and when there are changes, that will be a big deal to some people, but, you know, that is a really great option if, if that's something that does work for you, those, those bins there, so more to come on that. And then we did have our, I'm trying to think back to when our last meeting here was, but we've had, since had our budget work session, kind of starting to get the, the things moving forward on that, trying to keep the levy the same as we can. I know department has worked really hard to be, you know, conservative, take turns of, you know, give and take a little bit, but I know there's more conversations to be had on that, but moving forward with that.
All right. City manager?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
No, thank you.
I have one question. What happened to all the pictures? Oh, yeah.
We, we have started removing things from this building and disposing of things where we could. We're obviously going to, so, yeah.
Okay.
Those came down in December, at the same time the council change happened.
Yeah, just curious.
A update on the senior center.
The latest update I have for Leonard Senior Living is they would like to get started with construction this spring. They were running into some, they were wanting to use some alternative materials, and we've been working with them to determine if that falls within their site plan.
Okay.
But their, their last intention was to begin in the spring.
Right, okay. People asking me all the time. Yeah, that's good.
Waiting for interest rates. Yeah, I tell them a lot of stuff. Yeah, it affects a lot of construction. Staff? Item eleven, adjourn until March eighteenth. Great. Thank you. Do you want to do a roll?
Just motion, if they can.
Motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Deanna.